Yeah, one of each. That's where I was at the last meeting because it was my first knockover. I had a business meeting and a regular, you know, monthly meeting. I planned on being there because I didn't do anything for 30, 40, 50, or 60. I'm 70 now, so I ain't got too many more times.
Okay.
That was awesome. As I walked in, it was late. Had all those people there, you know? The whole thing, happy birthday. I didn't know what to do. I took my hat off.
That's awesome.
Jammed me right on.
That's great.
I was wrong. There are speakers in the back. Or they're very soft.
Look at that. Look at that mug.
Look at that mug. That's a real beauty. They're everywhere there. They're awesome.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing.
Let's listen tonight. See how it goes. If they just turned those up significantly louder than those, everything would work.
Kind of nervous. It's a lot of time. That's why I can't do it. I watched Katie.
Katie's gonna be...
Yeah. She's got little kids during the pandemic. It must have been terrible. That was, that has to be the hardest term ever.
I think everybody else has.
Did we start? There we go. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the November 9th, 2021 regular meeting of the Auburn Planning Board. We'll begin our meeting tonight with a roll, Carl, starting over here on my right.
Riley Vizra.
Stephen Martelli.
Joseph Moran.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Dana Staples.
Evan Seer.
Brian Dubois.
Darren Finnegan.
And I'm Matthew Duval. Item two on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 12th. From October 12th and October 26th. We'll start with October 12th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I have a second. I have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Onto the minutes for October 26th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
There's a discrepancy in the minutes of the 26th.
There, there's a... So, do you want to make an amendment to the minutes?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay, well, first, okay, so what we have to do is we have to kill this motion to accept. And then we have to...
Motion to reconsider the motion.
Or we can just vote and have it fail and then... All those in favor? All those against?
I have to abstain. I know you were looking at me like I wasn't at the meeting.
No, you weren't at the meeting, so you can't vote. Okay, well, since we done... I think it fails by default because it didn't get four votes to win, so... What's, what are the discrepancy you see with the minutes?
On the people present, I understand that Evan was not here, Evan Seer. And it shows that only myself was absent at that time. If you go through the people present, it shows that the associates who brought up, that would make eight people rather than seven.
Yep. So, yeah, we should change that so that Evan actually wasn't here. And so he should be removed from the people present and put into the people absent. Thank you. Any other changes to the minutes? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. The minutes stand approved. Onto item number three on our agenda. This is a table discussion of the zoning map amendment slash public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Can we just review how the voting works with associate members again, just for people to know?
Right. Thank you. So... Associate members, we have two associate members tonight. Mr. Dubois and Mr. Moran. And they are able to participate in discussions, but they can neither vote nor make motions. So, thank you. Item number three on our agenda is a table discussion about the zoning map amendment. The proposed amendment to the low-density country residential and rural residential strips abutting the agricultural resource protection zone to expand from a width of 450 feet to a width of 750 feet from the center line of roadways. Do I have a motion to remove this item from the table?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. We'll start with a staff report.
So we've done, we've done this presentation a number of times between the council and planning board. And then the planning board, or council, rather, had asked for an additional public meeting. So we presented essentially the same information with a couple of new pieces of information. So I'll go through it fairly quickly without going through all of the example slides. But I also want to make sure we cover some of the new information. The presentation will explain the zoning proposal. Will show graphically where within the city in the residential strips. The council directives, the council has directed us to give consideration to these changes. And that's why we're, we're here doing that. The criteria for the zoning map amendment. We went back to the council a second time for clarification once we started to actually draw the lines on the map based on their initial directive to make sure that we were interpreting it correctly. The map overview, I'll take care of that, that part of it. And then at a previous discussion with the planning board, the planning board had questions about traffic taxes and the comprehensive plan tie-in, how it relates to our comp plan. We have that in the presentation. So the proposed changes are largely in the northern part of the city, up around Lake Auburn, the west side of Lake Auburn, and the northern side of Lake Auburn, and the southern part of the city, and then some along the Minut Avenue corridor. That is where most of our existing residential strips exist. It was pointed out to me, we use this map again for the public notice. We had identified a mistake on the east side of Johnson Road in the zoning map where we included some land in a residential strip that strict adherence to the council directives would not have included. So we have, we have modified that, but it is still shown on the back of the public notice. So we notified a few extra people, more than what we had to as part of the public notice for tonight's meeting. The initial directive from the council was to initiate a formal request for the planning board to explore the feasibility of expanding the residential strips from 400 feet from the center line, the existing structure, actually 450, but that was the initial order, to approximately 750 feet. Or to the property line, whichever is less within those existing residential strips. Part of what took longer to put this together and why we had sort of a two-step process between the planning board and council is we discussed this idea with the planning board initially. But creating the maps where we stop at the property line at every parcel throughout the city was a bit of a tedious task, and we wanted to make sure that we were taking a close look at the concept before we spent the time and the money to have those maps developed. Went back to the plant, to the council after the planning board had initial hearings. With the new maps, we were able to create more exact abutters notices. And the council asked us to have a second public hearing with the planning board. That was tabled, and here we are tonight to continue that discussion. The criteria, when we actually started drawing the lines on the maps, we went back to the council for clarification. The boundaries would go to 750 feet from the center line of properties that have existing residential zoned road frontage, even if they wrap around or behind other parcels that are not as deep. Other parcels that are less than 750 feet. You'll see that on the map. The boundary would be extended to 750 feet on lots that do not have the minimum required road frontage. So lots that are in the residential strips, they have some road frontage, but may not have the full amount that's required for a new lot today. Those still get extended to the 750-foot mark. Stopping the residential zone boundary at the road right-of-way for lots less than 750 feet deep, that abut roads that are zoned agricultural on the back or on the side of the parcel. So the lots have residential frontage, but the back lot line might be up against an agriculturally zoned roadway. And we're not continuing that residential zone beyond the currently ag-zoned roadway. We can look at examples on the map for that as well. And expand the residential zone 750 feet along the western boundary of Riverside Drive. But on the eastern boundary of Riverside Drive, most of the boundary is delineated to match the flood map. And the decision was made not to extend the residential zone into the 100-year floodplain along the Andrews-Coggan River. So that's shown on the maps that we have now. The... I'll go to the maps in a, in a minute. The planning board had questions about traffic at an earlier meeting. And we went through scenario, trying to estimate the amount of land that would actually be available for development based on existing lot sizes, based on steep slopes, based on wetlands in the Lake Auburn watershed, based on the wastewater disposal standards that are more stringent than other places and render a lot of lots unbuildable site distance and curb cuts. We did a reduction for that as well. We went over one of the, these numbers at our previous planning board meeting. One of the questions that the planning board had asked was, how could we sort of assign this traffic to different roadways within the city? And at that time, not understanding which, which roadways had the largest impact for, for the residential strip expansion? Which roadways were going to pick up the most residential land? We'll take a look at the map here in a minute after we go through the PowerPoint. But we are able to break down the acreages based on roadway now on the zoning map and also the acreages between zoning districts or by individual streets. I think the general takeaway from this map is that although we're talking about approximately 1,200 acres of land, the backside of existing residential strips that changes from agricultural to rural residential, you can't just take a one-acre minimum lot size and say that there's going to be 1,200 new lots. Because there's a lot of other constraints at play that will reduce the number of actual lots that would become available for development. Staff estimates that as 300 to 700 acres worth of potential developable land. And then it would be individual decisions from that point on, property owners deciding to either use or not use that land. But just averaging the trips, we'd be talking about 15 to 30 trips on average in the peak hour on any given road if you averaged across all roads. And we'll be able to take a closer look at which roads pick up the most residential land. And those roads would ultimately pick up more trips than the roads that don't pick up as much residential land. The comprehensive plan tie-in, there was a section of the comprehensive plan related to the extension of residential strips. I recall from the discussion that it was more about where we would create residential strips along existing roadways. I think this would be a different approach to accomplish a similar idea of expanding residential opportunity. But it is a little bit different than what was contemplated in the comprehensive plan. Those standards are laid out here. You've had these in your packet and have used them in other discussions for whether or not to extend residential strips over time. One in particular, the last one, was not to expand them. In rural roads with undeveloped frontage in the Lake Auburn watershed. Here, we're talking about roads with developed frontage largely. But again, it wasn't, this, this section wasn't designed to deal with the exact question that's in front of you today. So this was the schedule and timeline. We have met with the public, the planning board and the council, a number of times on this subject. We're hoping for the planning board to reach a final recommendation tonight to send this back to the council for a final decision. The tools that we put together for actually mapping this out, I mentioned that even in the northern part of the city, those have been updated based on the discussions that we've had over time. Johnson Hill Road, Johnson Road as an example. At one time, we showed a residential strip on this eastern side. That's no longer there. That's, that's the way that the council directives should be interpreted. I think we have them accurately interpreted currently on this map that we've used to, to show the changes. Any areas that are proposed for change are outlined in blue at the rear of the residential strips. And those are only in areas where the current residential strips are less than 750 feet deep. You can see some areas, as the board knows, at one time, most of our residential strips were 750 feet deep, and they were reduced to limit the amount of subdivisions that could occur. These dead-end residential subdivisions that we see in some parts of the city. But other areas, based on existing houses, remain 750 feet deep. And we're not proposing to expand it in those areas. I think perhaps the most useful tool, this GOSH board that was created that allows us to really break down the acreages by street and by some other characteristics. You can see here, we can look at the total number of acres that are part of the proposed changes are displayed here. At this scale, for whatever reason, it's not printing the name of each road. It's printing every other one, but Pownell Road is the largest at 100, almost 160 acres of new residential land. West Auburn Road, 100 acres. North Auburn Road, 96 acres, and it goes down from there. We can zoom in on any particular area, and the map will recalculate the acreage based on the extent that we're looking at the map, which is a really useful tool if you're looking at, say, the Lake Auburn watershed in particular. We can choose by zoning district if you just want to look at the currently low-density country residential zone. We can see that there's Skilling's Corner Road picks up the most, 55 acres of low-density country residential. Would be expanded with the new residential strip. Turner Road, a small amount on the eastern side. Stone Road, smaller amount on the western side. But we're able to drill down into the acreages if you really want to look at how many new acres on any given road would be part of the proposed change. We can do by road and by zone here. The brown color is the rural residential zoned acreage along that particular road. 13 along Skilling's Corner, 55 in low-density country along Skilling's Corner. We can do that for any road that you want to look more closely at as we, as we have this discussion. We have the breakdown by size. So 71 of the affected parcels are between two and five acres. Fairly low likelihood that they would create any substantial new residential parcels. Greater than one acre, 45 parcels, one to two acres. That's greater than one but less than two. One, one to two acres, different categories, 35 parcels. Five to 10 acres, greater than 10 acres. And I have... Had the zone selected, so they're recalculated. Five to 10 acres, 25 parcels. Greater than 10 acres, seven parcels within the area that's mapped currently. That would be affected by that. The total acreage by extension, we have the total number of acres rather than the total number of lots in the right-hand column in each of those categories. And then slopes and wetlands, and this was used when we put together the assumptions about limitations on lots that reduce the total number of developable acreage. We can also break those down by road and by acre. We can zoom to any extent and look at where those, those limitations exist. You do have, just so we can note it for the record, one property owner has pointed out that our zoning map is a little bit odd as it relates to the residential strip on Riverside Drive in this general area. Most of Riverside Drive follows the floodplain boundary along the river. For whatever reason, these three parcels do not. The large parcel owner here in the center, it's not something that would have to be a part of a discussion tonight. I think it's something if the board was passing a favorable recommendation, they could recommend that we adjust this to follow the floodplain in that area. Certainly not a requirement, but either way, you will have a petition at a future meeting to give that specific consideration as to why we don't have the line following the floodplain in that area. And you also have a letter from the Agricultural Committee. And I know there are some members here that we'll go over tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone on the board have questions for staff? I have one. This analysis predates the recent Lake Auburn watershed study, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions for staff, then I think we can open public comment. Do I have a motion to do that?
Motion to open a public comment.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? At this time, we'd like to invite members of the public to come address the board on this subject. When you do, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak with the board. Thanks.
Michael Morrissey, 825 Perkins Ridge Road. I'd like to point out how the comprehensive plan and this proposal are tied together. We're talking about all of this stuff, and we're talking about our current situation. We're not talking about proposals for the future. And then, and I'd just like to take a moment to do that, and I'll try to do it in my... I'm gonna use this map. I'll try to talk loudly. This is where we're waiting here.
We, we won't be able to hear that on YouTube or on the recording unless you're using the mic. I can get a portable mic if we need one.
Yes, please.
I just did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the area up here in the northern part of Taylor Pond, this is all proposed to be changed. This is all proposed to go to the Bourbon Residential Area. That, this, this is all... That's, that's one unit per three acre. Per, it's proposed to go to eight units per acre, this area. Part of here, change, eight units per acre. That's one unit per acre. This area here, proposed to go to 16 units per acre. That's in the Taylor Pond watershed.
So, excuse me, sir. We're talking about the residential strips right now, not the future land use map.
I'm, I'm not talking about the comprehensive plan. I'm talking about how this is tied to the comprehensive plan. And I'm not think, I don't really think you're thinking about how the two are tied and how this will increase density. In the north Auburn, north Auburn area, you're talking about changing that to a half-acre lot, which is currently an acre.
Can, can you use the standard?
So with that, that in consideration, we're talking about densities increasing. That's without taking this stuff out of the agricultural zone. Oops, excuse me. If you do that, you will, these two proposals come together, they will increase density. Absolutely. I also think we have, we have a deal with the state on water treatment and how we draw our water from the reservoir. And that if we increase building in these zones, that we will at some point be paying tens of millions of dollars for a costly water treatment plant. I don't know if we're prepared to do that just yet. You know, we just, we recently had an issue with our water quality. I don't think we should beg for more trouble personally. You know, I believe the prudent thing to do would be to ask for an amendment to the map that protects our watershed, or just table this until the comprehensive plan is complete so that we can see what the development impacts are, opportunities and impacts are. You know, I don't see what the rush is for this. You know, we, we have a plan. That's how things go. That's what we should be doing. We should be working within that. And we shouldn't be forcing something through that people don't feel comfortable with, and that could possibly have drastic impacts if we do implement this. So, you know, I'll also add, to be honest, we have plenty of development opportunities in this town. If, in the current zoning, people don't want to sell the land. They like the land. They bought that land so they didn't have to live on top of other people, that they can enjoy the nature, they can go out hiking, they go out, enjoy their piece of property, and not have people on top of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric, will you do me a favor? And as I mentioned when I went to the planning board where you got, where it was voted that it would go...
Excuse me, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm Pam Russo. I live at 745 West Auburn Road. Can you, so I've spent time with this. Can you just do me a favor and show me? Oh my gosh, I forgot my old address. 325 Hotel Road. I, this, I just need to know this because that would be part of what I was gonna say. 320 Hotel Road, sorry. Okay, and can you scroll out? And, and I'm only saying this is because I feel like it was a question that I thought at the original, and it has to do with the 750 setback. If you click on what zone that will be based on what they forwarded to the city council and it's rural residential, is that... and it's rural residential, is that true?
I don't have that on this map.
Pardon?
I don't have that on this map.
Doesn't it say RR? Okay. So one of my questions is that I've heard over and over again that it's, you want to be transparent, and you want everybody to know what's going on. Is that true? Right? And who is the young lady that did all the mapping here? So she did a great job, but my question is, I found on the website where it did say rural resident, and I was having trouble seeing where the map is. I don't know. How many maps do you have on the website?
Many.
Many, 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 right? And so if, I would think that we would all want, you would want everybody to find the exact map that we've asked for over and over again, so that we would be able to easily access that map. Am I right? Yes? Okay. And I don't find it very easy to access. I found one, and I, it went off. I can take a picture of it. And so I think that when you look at this, in order, you know, I think this is all part of the same thing, is that you have to be able to know, instead of just going down to the city hall, you need to be able to access this online and then really see what's going to happen with your land. And you're maybe posted on the front page, or whatever, the homepage, because it's not very evident. And it's very, very important to know that, as we talk about, that going down to the 750 feet setback is that if you look at a map and it says you're rural residential, but that's not really what you're going to be, that makes a big difference to all of us, doesn't it? And so at that meeting where it was forwarded, except for some changes in the Lake Auburn watershed, how are people going to know how it's going to affect them? Because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is not going to be rural residential, which I have a picture on the phone that the map I looked at, it was, I searched, and it says it will be. So in the Lake Auburn watershed, it's going to go from 200 to, this was proposed, okay, 250 to 200 feet frontage. Whereas along here, as I understand it, and looking at the other maps that I can't find, okay, I've looked, that it's going to go up to 100 feet frontage. Now, that makes a big difference for the 450 to the 750-foot setback for development. Okay? I know I'm...
Thank you.
And I may speak again.
I think she's not going to conjunction with the comprehensive plan again.
Yes. It's all part of the state.
All right. My name is Michael Haskinen. I live at 380 Young's Corner Road. I'm a relatively new member of this community, and I am going to make three points regarding this proposal. The first is that I'm basically opposed to this, and the reason is because my wife and I moved here because we like the rural residential woodland field area surrounding Auburn. We like that. I suspect a lot of people in this room like that. The second reason I'm going to offer to be opposed to this comes out of the local newspaper, The Sun Journal, from November 3rd, and I'll just quote that. They were meeting in Glasgow. Leaders vow to protect forests. World leaders promise to protect Earth's forests, to end deforestation in the coming decade, and to halt and reverse deforestation by 2030. It puts me in mind of the old bumper sticker, "Think globally and act locally." I think we could participate in that. The third reason I'm going to offer comes from research that I did prior to this meeting. I looked at the comprehensive plan at the public library, and I came across the Taylor Pond watershed survey report, which was done in 2006, and a lot of my neighbors helped with this. And I'm going to read from that report. Taylor Pond has been placed on the state's non-point source pollution priority watershed list, which means that the lake is threatened or impaired by pollution runoff. It is also on the list of lakes most at risk from new development under the Maine Stormwater Law. It goes on to say, "Studies have shown that runoff from developed areas has five to 10 times the amount of phosphorus compared to runoff from forested areas." And it concludes that long-term protection of Taylor Pond will require coordinated stewardship, coordinated stewardship in the entire watershed. So development in the watershed for Taylor Pond, and I'm going to say by extension, Lake Auburn, is a bad idea. And I think we can do something here locally to help the planet and to help these water bodies. Again, my name is Michael Haskinen. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Fred Holler. I live at 352 West Auburn Road. First of all, I congratulate you, and I appreciate the work of this committee. It's not an easy job. You are the front, first line of defense in keeping Auburn, the quality of Auburn life as it is. I submit to you that this plan is not just a mere change in zoning a little bit. This plan, I think, will change the entire character of our city. And you've heard people allude to the fact that we're a, we have a rural atmosphere, which we cherish, and we don't want that changed. We see this pressure to suddenly develop our city, and I know there's pressure to develop. I don't know where it comes from. I know the city council has asked you to study the issue, but why are they stimulated? Is it developers? Is it landowners? Is it the population in general? Where is this idea coming from? I don't know. I submit to you that the plan covers the entire city, not just a little bit of North Auburn Road or West Auburn Road. And by the way, if you put 96 more lots on North Auburn Road and 100 more lots on West Auburn Road, they could be unlivable. Right now, that is a road that is a compact road. We have tandem tractor trailers with logs on that road going up and down. That is, road is opened to tractor trailers and anybody else who wants to use it. There are a lot of questions about this development. We were originally, back in the 50s, they developed a plan to expand the city from the inside out. This is, this is not inside out. This is the whole town. This is going to change the way Auburn is. And Auburn is an easy, livable city right now. You're close to everything. There's not much of a hassle if you want to go shopping, or you want to go to the doctor, or you want to get your car repaired. This is a great town to live in, and so we've been discovered. And there are people who want to develop it and go, and that's fine. We can't stop development. We need it, but we have to be a little more careful than this. I also was surprised to see the amount of taxes that will be added to each property owner because of this change in rural residential definition. That's significant amount of tax. This is a tax bill as well as a zoning change. This is a serious tax bill, which will stimulate people to want to sell their land or develop their land in order to reduce their taxes. There's a lot of folks here who are reaching close to the retirement age, la da da, and they will easily sell their land to people who want to develop it.
Thank you, sir. You have reached your three minutes.
If there's no one behind me, I'd like to talk a bit more.
Why don't you have a seat and let somebody else talk, and then you can come back up and finish?
All right. That's fine.
I'll be short and sweet. My name's Ed Huggins. I live at 216 Perkins Ridge Road. I have a quick, just a complaint about the maps. We were sent a map to our house. Didn't have our road on it, but it told us that we had, we were part of this growing Auburn residential change. Kind of bothered me that I had to, I had to do research just to find out quite where I lived on the map that they sent me. It's sort of poor planning for a planning board. I also, my wife and I both are worried about the water. I heard from a number of people tonight about Taylor Pond. Well, it's almost in my backyard, you know? And I don't think we can afford to make it any worse than it already is, you know? I loved hearing the gentleman earlier talking about how Taylor Pond is not in good shape. And it's, it looks like it's going to be even worse for Lake Auburn, which we don't pay, we don't pay to be, to treat that water. Now we don't. Maybe in the future we will. We build literally hundreds of houses out that way. Taxes. I own 23 acres. I pay $6,500, give or take, and I don't know the exact amount. Pay about $6,500 worth of taxes, and I'm retired. I was a school teacher. I don't make a lot. That's a lot of money. You put another tax bill on top of that, I don't believe, I'm not sure, but I don't believe because of the slope of my land and because of the wetlands that are close to it, I could subdivide if I wanted to. And I don't want to. One of the reasons we live there is, as a number of people have already mentioned, I live out there because I love the land. I have a garden. I have animals. I have a dog that gets to run free. All of those things contribute to me wanting to live on Perkins Ridge Road without any Last but not least, I'd like, I'd like to offer a suggestion. If folks want to subdivide, if they want to build new lots, if they'd like to do something with their property to make some extra money, and perhaps, you know, expand Auburn to a certain extent, you know, we could use some more money, you know, from taxes. Why can't this be done on a piece-by-piece, one, one property at a time could be subdivided? One at a time? If you are interested in subdividing your property, you come to the planning board, you make your proposal, and go on. Why this big deal? Why does this have to be so extravagant? That's my question. My suggestion is we go a little bit slower on this deal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Shaw. I live at 1200 Sopers Mill Road in Auburn. I own and operate Valley View Farm, and I'm also the chairperson of the Auburn Agricultural Committee. You have in front of you a letter here tonight that was written jointly by our committee. And I'd like to take this opportunity to read it to you, so that not only you hear it, but our folks here hear it, and anybody else that could be listening will hear it. To the planning board, City of Auburn. Dear members of the planning board, the agricultural committee appreciates that much effort has gone into formulating the proposed strip zone changes. Many, but not all of the items in our earlier letter are being addressed. And that letter references a document that was sent supposedly to you folks about the end of September that evidently you did not receive. Much work remains before we can accurately predict or describe the extent and ramifications of these substantive changes to Auburn. Auburn has tempted the strip zoning concept in the past and discontinued it. Auburn Tax Assessor Karen Scammon has summed up taxation, taxation changes, pointing out that if strip zoning were to be implemented, taxes would increase in the rezoned areas. Certainly, the agricultural committee concurs and would emphasize the tax issue may and probably will be affected by other currently existing land tax incentive programs, i.e. tree growth, farmland trust, and open space. These programs are state-of-main managed, not totally in control of Auburn's city tax department. At a well-attended planning board committee meeting last month, Auburn taxpayers voiced overwhelming support for a "Proceed with Caution" approach to changing land use zones, and suggested that in fact, a case-by-case or slow, measured incremental change would be preferable to sweeping citywide changes. We read daily about carbon sequestration. Two years ago, the strategic plan and the natural resources work groups recognized this issue and certainly did not have the benefit of the wealth of information, research currently available and being developed. Maine Governor Janet Mills has formed the Maine Forest Carbon Tax Force, which will most certainly impact landowners in Auburn. Recommendations from that task force should be incorporated in future planning. The agriculture committee urges the planning board to recommend that city council leave current zoning in place. Provide the sought-after flexibility through the variance process, which could provide immediate resolution to a specific development issue. The concept of housing desirability has changed in the last few months. Now is not the time to initiate a 10-year change in the comprehensive plan to accommodate a crisis, when there are already available development lots in the current rural residential zone. The members of the agricultural Auburn Committee, thank you for your time and attention. We look forward to more discussions in the future. Eric, I have one further question for you. You stated that on the Powell Road, there would be 100 lots. Is that correct, that could be created? If so, that would significantly change the density of that very rural road significantly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Damian, 703 South Witherm Road. For the record, I'd like you to know, I don't like this idea at all. It touches my land. It increases my, the value of my land in the back that's not accessible, and I was kind of wondering how you want me to pay for that. Soon as you make this, this proposal go through, I'm going to be stuck with a lot more acres that are worth a lot more money, according to you folks, that are non-accessible. I don't think that's fair to everyone that has the same problem. Whether you want to develop it or not, you're going to be stuck with paying more money every time the tax man knocks on the door. Have you ever considered this? You know, I'm, I'm very much opposed to what happens here. Just to recap, a few years ago, you decided to get more money from all of us, and you took the county road that went by me, and you split it in half, and I gained a lot more acreage. Well, that sounded nice until the tax day, and then I had to pay a lot more money. Couple years ago, you decided to give special permission to build condominiums and hotels at the ski, ski areas and golf courses. That's in my backyard again. I don't want all that. I don't want all that growth. It just keeps, you just keep making things happen that are not what I want. I would like to have it stay rural the way it is and not have all this proposed development. Now, Pommel Road kind of backs up onto my lot, and, you know, and Mrs. Shaw is right. That will severely impact the amount of homes out there and the amount of public support you have to put out there. I wish I could give you something more substantial to make you think my way, but I think you have a lot more people in the City of Auburn that would think the same way as all these folks think if it was directly impacting them. But they just won't come down because it's not, it's not my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Lounsbury, 505 West Auburn Road. The previous speakers have been very eloquent in describing their opposition to this zoning amendment, so I won't repeat that. I agree with them. But I had two questions. One is, why is it not possible to keep the taxes the same, and then when land is sold, and only when it is sold, to change the taxation? This would be similar to the way the state's farm and open space laws work. The second question I have is, what has been done to protect soils of prime and statewide significance? There was lip service given to that in the documents that I read online, but I don't know in practice what has happened. And the last thing we should be thinking of doing in an age when we're concerned about our food supply, trying to make it more local, is allowing development of any of the most important soils that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I only want one more. I think that's the senses, you've got a good sense of how people who live on this land feel. I think what's been put in your lap is a proposal that would change the quality of life and the character of our city. That's way beyond what you should be asked to do. You can make recommendations, but I think there should be a 10-year plan, and it should be a steady, organized, rational way of expanding our city. This is, this is a big plan. This is big. And the city council should be advised that this was really their problem, not yours. They should give this some thought. They should come up with a prolonged plan. There should be much, much more publicity to what's going on here. The average person doesn't have time to come here after a day's work and listen to all this and appeal to you. But we, we're lucky we can do it. I think you should go back to the city council and tell them, this is their issue. This is their problem. They should find out what the people want. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still Pam Russo. I know that you forward your recommendations to the city council, and I am very grateful that you have tabled this twice, and I think you should make it dead now. This is not a good plan, and I agree with whoever said that. If this is done by one-on-one, and I realize that you have to change some of the rules in the Auburn business to do that, then go and do that. But if you can put on, whoops, sorry. If you can put on West Auburn Road a huge stable without any problem, there's no reason why, without anybody even knowing around them too, their neighbors, there's no reason why you can't make this as a one-on individual case. And so I ask that you scrap this whole idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Garrett Crook. I live on North Turner Road and didn't want to come to this meeting tonight, but was convinced by my wife that I should be coming. I have been following what has been going on, and I'm opposed to the change. There's a wonderful plan in place. There are mechanisms, as people have pointed out, if someone, a particular landowner wants a change, the processes in place here work very well in Auburn. That's one of the wonderful things about living in this community. I defy anyone to find a pine tree or pucker brush that's going to require the services and the additional costs to this city if this plan is put into place. Someone may be thinking about getting more tax revenue without actually talking about reevaluation or something like that. If they're thinking that, they need to look at the other side of the costs that are involved. It's a bad idea. There's plenty of places in Auburn where this kind of thing can go, and it's already part of the comprehensive plan. If this were being generated by the people that live in this area, all of these areas, if those folks, these folks were generating it, then I would hope the city would put as much time into it as they have, very thoroughly, for somebody, but certainly not the people that live there, that live here and love this community. So, just a thought. But I would hope that it's not tabled again. I would hope that it goes where it should go, and that would be deep six it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Lasagna, 220 West Auburn Road. I'm the Ward 1st Councillor. I just want to make sure that it's clear to all the folks who've come out here what the process is moving forward, whether Eric can make sure that he knows that, what your responsibility is, and then the responsibility of the council. I wouldn't want to encourage people to come to the council meeting where the final decisions are made about this. It really makes a difference. We want to see you there. And finally, I'll say, people have mentioned the importance of looking at a whole piece of this. That includes the future land use plan. It includes the comp plan, and it also includes the Lake Auburn plan that is, has just been completed and is really important in terms of informing these decisions. So this can't be done in a vacuum. Needs to be done in terms of looking at all of those plans together. And right now, we really don't have those available or completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Morris, see you again. I'm just like, somebody mentioned soil, and I'd just like to talk about water. I have a well. It was very dry this summer, and I was really worried about my well. If we had more, much of this proposed area is going, not where we have water services, they're wells. You add more houses, you're going to drain more from the aquifer. We're already reading about what's happening out west with water and the scarcity of water and communities, like dying because they just don't have water. I didn't hear any study about, like, what are our water resources? What are the resources? What is available? What does our water table look like? What can, what level of development can that support? You know, those, that's something I think we need to look at, you know? And between this proposal, future land development, you know, we just need to put the brakes on a little bit on one of these, one of these things. And I think, again, I'll suggest, the prudent thing is to table this until we find out what we're going to do for the next 10 years. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Susan Brown, I live at 152 Dillingham Hill Road. I've lived there since 2003. Before that, I lived 10 years in town, right, right in town. And what everyone has said about the, the space is why I moved out there. I, I, I don't understand this, I don't understand how a town makes a big, broad brush around all these areas and says, okay, we're going to change the property that you bought. And first, let me preface this, by my, I only have two and a quarter acres. I don't have any farm ag land. I don't, I live on my land with my house, and I pay the taxes for that. But people bought property with these plans in place. Some people have lived there 50 or plus years, and, and you're going to come in and you're going to change all these zones around where, where they live to gain, you know, $1,000 here, $1,000 there, through all these places to allegedly raise taxes. Meanwhile, putting, I don't know how many houses you have planned for Johnson Hill Road, which my street abuts Johnson Hill Road, where you're talking about these new homes. What about East Auburn School? Is East Auburn School going to handle, this tiny little school going to handle these new families that have three, four kids? Who's going to, who's going to pay, then what's going to happen? The taxes are going to go up for that. The, people keep talking about the water, and we move up there, and I, I'm not obviously right on the lake, but I love the lake, and I respect what the lake has been for Lewiston, Auburn, for the 27 years we've lived in this community, and how all these Lewiston and Auburn people have protected that water and the watershed for all these years, and now we want to just build, 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 and not, not care about that water? I was at the meeting that talked about the feasibility of, you know, the lake and the water and if, when you need to get the big expensive filter in there for $25 million or whatever, and how many lots you can build for that. Right now, you know, people just take care of it. With the people, all, all of us that live up in these surrounding areas, we don't put fertilizer on our grass so that your water, that people that live in the city and in Lewiston drink have good water to drink. We, we care about that lake. Would we love to put our toes in it? Sure we would. But, but we don't because you don't. It's Lake Auburn. It's beautiful. It's pristine. You walk Spring Road, you, you bike Spring Road, or you, that's what you do. But, but to take people's property and totally change what it's going to be with massive increases and just changing the, you know, that, you know, there's going to be two houses over here, behind your house, in front of your house, to the side of your house, and just totally changing the whole neighborhood just seems so counterproductive. And just another thing, because you're the planning board, why, why don't we do something with those areas in town that could be used more, more productively? I've lived here 27 years, and that, the building that the barn is, and the building across the road, and that old, where the budget truck is, budget truck company is, those places are horrible eye source. What if we did something there? What if you worked really hard and got somebody to try to develop those areas? Maybe made a little tiny city park? And we have all that river. I grew up on a river in western New York, by Niagara Falls. We've got all that river. We've got all that river.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So could you pull up 500 Pommel Road, Auburn? Obviously. So that's all, my frontage is all wetland.
Can you tell us who you are and where your, your address?
Hefner, Tony Hefner. 500 Pommel Road. So that whole, all my frontage is all swamp land, but I got 12 acres. So I agree with what everybody said. Guys are going to tax me on all that, but I ain't ever going to be able to use it. And I'd like to see it stay in agriculture, residential agriculture, what's it's in. I don't, I can't find it on your app that you send out to us. So that's the piece right there that your house is on. Is that it? So does that show wetland on the front of that? When you drive by, it's all, it's a swamp there. By law, it says in the water. Just something that's, you know, it's a taxation for me for 12 acres of land out back that I'll never be able to do anything with out there. Same as what everybody else has said here. I just, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the board? Yes, sir.
Michael Askanen again, 380 Young's Quarter Road. I've been listening to people that have come here to speak, and a lot of them are talking about preserving the rural areas the way they are and finding other solutions in the city for growth and development. Happens to be that I'm an architect, and I, a lot of my neighbors helped with this Taylor Pond Watershed Survey, and I'm sure that they would step up if the City of Auburn wanted help and input from the community. I, for one, will step up and help out if the City of Auburn wants help exploring alternatives to residential development in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the board on this topic?
Hi. My name is Samantha. I moved to Auburn two years ago from northeastern Pennsylvania to be with, to continue having a family with my partner, Michael Tardif, who is born and raised in Auburn. It's definitely different here, and I definitely see how there's a push to make this part of our country look like every other part of the country. I'm from Pennsylvania. There's like nearly 13 million people there. It's very crowded. It's hard to, it's hard to find local food. The amount of local food that is available here, including meat and dairy, is astonishing to me. There are many places in the country that don't know anything like this. And all I want to say about a watershed is that it's not just a reservoir for drinking water. If you ask farmers what groundwater is for, it is for farming. It is a reservoir for irrigating crops and for growing any kind of wild food forest, growing new trees. Okay, so this is just about like protecting water for a day when, when humans can't find something to drink. This is about, this is about food security. Someone says this is a tax bill. I think, I think that that's true, and it is true. This is, this is all about taxes and growing a population that you, you are not equipped, the schools here are not equipped to have greater population. You have a, you have a, a different community here. That's all I can say, from many other parts of the, of the, of our country. And the agricultural zones of Auburn are supposed to be, this day and age, looked at as the last resort to feed its local community, and that does include Lewiston. They are one entity. This is one large community. And if anything, major planning should be going into bringing in agriculture. If as much planning went into figuring out how you're going to get taxes for the next 10 years, as did for your food supply, you would find that you are already under, whoa, way under the bar. Okay? So Maine doesn't even have the same soil as many other places. Your, your soil here like needs to, needs large, vast, like regeneration. You have sandy, loamy soil here. You don't have a lot of it. This is like, there needs to be soil generation planning in, in these communities. There needs to be, you have, but you are water-rich, which is much different from many other places in this country. And if you have any water at this point, it needs to be protected, not, 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 you know, not just for drinking, but for, for many other reasons. And, and I don't, I do think it's a privilege to not be living in high-density areas. I live at 76 North Auburn Road. That's not the privilege that I'm like focused on holding on to. That's just like a privilege that I, that I get to have, but really, it's, it's the responsibility. These people in this, in this, in this room have more responsibility than to actually worry about. than to actually worry about paying more taxes.
So you're past your three minutes. Thank you though.
Thank you.
Hey guys, Matt Heinman here. I live at thirteen thirty-eight Pownell Road. You'll find me under Thomas. I go by my middle name. I don't know why the South decides to mess our initials up like that, but I grew up in the deep South. Been here twenty-five years and one thing I would like to address is I don't think we fully understand the tax situation. I think that's become a common theme here. And if somebody could put that together for us to show what would the tax structure look like for the individual properties that are affected, I think that might help with some clarity for the current property owners. The next thing I'd like to offer up is, has there been any discussion or will there be any discussion on a grandfather program for the properties that are not going to be developed with their current ownership? So that in the opportu, with the opportunity for a developer to come in and offer somebody to sell their property and then develop it, would that be the opportunity to change their tax structure versus grandfathering the current landowner to keep their situation the way it is? Again, I don't fully understand the tax situation. I do understand that there are some provisions on the rural residential zoning for capabilities to have more residential dwellings versus actually having those dwellings present for what they're taxed on with the land use itself. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Lasagna, two twenty West Auburn Road. I do want to say thank you so much for everybody who came. It's very impactful that you're here. Just know that there will be some openings on the planning board coming up because of the recent election and that if we could have more people run for city councils so that there are choices, that would be a great thing to see. So consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this topic?
Kathy Shaw, Sopers Mill Road, Valley View Farm in Auburn. I think what you're hearing tonight is slow down. I haven't heard one single person jump up and down saying, yes, I want more houses. I do, I do. We absolutely do need more dwellings, but the areas that we live in, that most of the folks that live in here are too precious for us at the way that they are now. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and address the board on this topic? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close public comment?
So move. Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? All right. So now we as a board can discuss this. I'd love to hear from everybody tonight and their thoughts about this. So we have, we heard a bunch of stuff from the public. I don't know whether we want to go through some of the questions that were asked and pose them to staff and see if we can get answers Thoughts? Anybody have things that they want to bring up at the moment?
I would like to have staff address some of the questions that were raised.
Great. Thank you very much. Would you like to raise those or you want to cash that to the rest of the board?
I can certainly begin unless someone else would like to.
Why don't you begin, Mr. Sir?
I think one of the questions that was raised several times was, why don't we do a case-by-case basis? So can staff explain why we would not be able to change zoning on a lot-by-lot basis?
There should be some consistency, I guess, in the zoning and in conformance with the general plan. You could put in place a future land use plan that shows a residential, if you're, this is what you're trying to accomplish is these strips. Let's assume that. But you wanted it to be a case-by-case basis. You could let people come in individually in petition for a zone change and show this wider residential strip as your, your future land use map. That would require the individuals to, under the current process, pay seven hundred dollars. That would cover the advertising costs for each of their individual, individual proposals. We'd write a staff report for each one of those. We'd bring it to this board for a public hearing and recommendation, advertise it in the newspaper twice, notify all the property owners around them within five hundred feet twice. This board would make a recommendation and then that recommendation would go to the city council. We'd once again advertise in the newspaper again, notify all the abutting property owners within five hundred feet, then hold a workshop, a public hearing and a second reading with the council. So each one of those considerations would be at least four meetings and hundreds of dollars of public notices. And it would be, unless there was a standard that laid out when we approve and don't approve them, I think it would just be fraught for being unfairly implemented, I guess.
Without such a process, would, would it be possible to consider it spot zoning? Would it be, I guess my question, would it be considered spot zoning?
I think it would be if the comp plan didn't support it.
Okay. And is, is spot zoning currently allowed under state law?
Is it allowed?
Under state law?
No, no, it's not.
Okay, so, all right. So that was a question. Another question that was raised a couple of times was, why don't we require individuals that want to subdivide their land into housing lots to come in front of the planning board? So the question would be, would they be required to do that?
If they, if they wanted to subdivide their land, either now or after the changes, every property owner can create at least two lots within a five-year period without coming to the board, if they meet the minimum dimensional standards.
So any lots, so taking one lot and turning it into three doesn't require planning board, doesn't require a process from the city. However, a landowner could not take their lot and turn it into five, or I mean to say four, without being required to come to the planning board and go through a subdivision process?
Approximately, yeah. Three, three or more trigger subdivision review, but there are some exceptions for longtime homeowners or gifts to children or family members. That would increase that.
One, I'm going to ask a question that was, that is, there was a concern and I'm going to ask a question to try to address the concern and I hope I do it justice. There were several comments about how this zoning change would dovetail with the proposed future land use plan that is currently being looked at by the city council. My question being, if the future land use plan is, is adopted by the city council, are those areas that are proposed to be rezoned or their future land use plan automatically rezoned?
No, there would be a zoning process after that, but they do, if they, if this and that are implemented in zoning, they affect each other.
Okay. I, I guess I asked the question to clarify that the future land use plan is a non-binding document. It's a recommendation, but it's not something that the city has to do?
It, it lays out the plans over time, but yeah, it's not a zoning map. It does not actually change the zoning.
Is it possible, and I'm going to ask this question although, this is not a question that the planning board, I think, I'm not sure we are the correct entity to address this question, but I will ask it because it was asked more than once. Is it possible to grandfather, I guess, the tax burden, for lack of a better term, that a property owner has until their land is sold?
There, there are state programs that a property owner, and I think we've talked a little bit about these, that maybe some of the people in the audience haven't been privy to. There are programs where a property owner can reduce their tax burden by agreeing to either allow public access or if they use their land for agriculture or by having forestry management plans in place and committing to not changing the land use to housing or some other form of development. But the actual assessed value of property, other than those state programs, you can't, you can't grandfather that. It has to be based on actual market value of the land. And zoning affects market value of land.
One, another concern that was brought up and kind of hinted at in some questions is, Ms. Lasagna attempted to address this, but who, who actually makes the decision as to whether or not this zoning change will occur?
The city council actually makes that decision. They've just asked this board for, and staff for, for a recommendation.
And I'd like to ask a follow-up question that didn't really come from the audience, but I think it's important for the audience to understand the answer to. Is the council required to do what the planning board recommends?
No.
So the planning board could say, we don't want this and the council could do it. And the planning board could say, we do want to do this and the council could say, we don't need to do it. The process simply requires that they have a recommendation.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just want the audience to know that.
And I, I do have the tax comparison charts for example parcels, if it's something you want to go over again.
That was the next question I was going to ask is, how does someone find out how this will impact them individually with regard to their taxes?
We, we really don't have the bandwidth to talk to every parcel owner throughout these areas. It's about eight hundred and fifty parcel owners and to do this calculation that we have. But we've tried to come up with some examples that represent property types so people could at least understand what the likely impacts would be to their taxes. We've presented this at a number of the public meetings and we can go over it tonight for anybody that didn't see it, but four eighty-three West Auburn Road was a parcel that had a total lot size nine point three-one acres. The residentially zoned portion is two point three-nine acres and the ag-zoned portion currently is six point nine-two acres. Their land value without the building, fifty-four thousand four hundred. Based on the mill rate for 2020, they paid approximately twelve hundred and ninety-two taxes, dollars in taxes for the land value only. If this change was implemented, now instead of two point three-nine acres of residential zone, they'd have four point seven-five acres. The ag-zoned piece gets reduced accordingly and their estimated land value goes from fifty-four thousand four hundred to sixty-one thousand six hundred. Using the 2021 mill rate, their taxes go, based on their land value only, from twelve ninety-two to fourteen sixty-seven, an increase of about a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that should be pretty common with a smaller lot, nine acres, that gains a relatively small amount of residential zone. They gain a couple acres of residential zone. A larger lot with either a lot of road frontage or a lot of land out back that is within the seven hundred and fifty feet, that's what this example is, forty-seven acres of land, four point five currently zoned residential with forty-two in the ag-zone, land value of ninety-one thousand. They pay a little over two thousand dollars a year in taxes just to pay the taxes on the value of their land, not their buildings. If this change is implemented, their residential zone goes from four point five acres of their parcel to fifteen point two. So really it's more than a tripling of the residential zone portion. Their land value goes from ninety-one to one fifteen, a little more, and their actual net tax bill increases by almost six hundred dollars, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. We can look at examples and kind of guide people. We've answered a lot of questions, hundreds of them over the last, last couple of months, just on this topic and kind of help people understand which one of these is most similar to their scenario. But we haven't been able to provide an exact dollar about every property owner. And we also don't know what the tax rate will be next year and there's, there's a lot of variables.
So just to clarify too, I heard you say, you know, you don't have the opportunity to... Sure. Sorry about that. I'm usually very loud. So, so just to clarify, so you said you don't actually have the opportunity to evaluate everyone's property and their taxes over again, but what I did hear in the last time that we had this meeting with that lovely tax woman that was here, and forgive me, I cannot remember her name, she was very open and available to say if anyone from the public has any questions, and I think maybe, I think it was Matt, I didn't catch your last name, sir, had mentioned that you were wondering about your taxes and the impact of it. And I do recall that she had, was open to having discussion about it. So, and yes, I understand that they can't go like, you know, parcel by parcel. That makes perfect sense, but she seemed very open and available to conversation around it.
Yep. Yeah, Karen Scam and the assessor, as well as planning staff are trying to answer those questions as they come in. We're certainly willing to do that.
Excellent.
And I guess another thing that came up was city services that was generally broadly described except for one specific city service, which was mentioned more than once, which is public education. To what extent do, does the school department have input when the planning board is reviewing items like this?
So the, the school department is invited to participate in our monthly plan review meetings. We talk about either plans that are coming before this board as well as zoning changes. I know that the manager's office and the mayor and council had some discussions with multiple city departments a year and a half or so ago when they set the goal of two thousand new residences, six thousand new residents over the next five years. One of the key things will be how those are distributed among areas of the city for those services. But based on that goal, we believe there is some capacity in all of our services without a major capital expansion for some additional house lots, but there's a limit to that.
So I, I know we don't often see it. We don't often see a report from the superintendent. Whether superintendent or someone of her choosing is invited to these meetings. So any sort of subdivision or special exception site plan triggered by this, the, the school department would be able to weigh in and describe its impact on the, on the, the community school in that, that neighborhood?
Yeah, every city department, including the school department, is invited to those meetings and every city department regularly participates in those.
Okay. And I'm sure that I have, again, I apologize. I said I was going to try to do my best. I am sure that I have forgotten some things, so I will relinquish if anyone else has questions that they noticed that I didn't ask.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions or things that they want to clarify that came up during the public comment?
Yeah, Mr. Dwal. There was one question from the public about how many lots could be added to Pownell Road. I think that was, the, the number thrown out was the acres, but I don't know about lots.
Yeah, I don't know about, about lots either. It looks like on Pownell Road, there is about a hundred and fifty-nine acres affected by the change. Most of that's backland. A lot of Pownell Road is built up, but there are some opportunities for additional lots. I, I don't believe you'd see a hundred lots out of a hundred and fifty-nine acres, but I don't have an exact number.
Yeah, Mr. Dwal.
Heard a couple of themes. There's probably more, but one was kind of a knot in my backyard. theme to me, the other was around taxes. Some of these lots, we know they fall into the strip zones. But due to a variety of reasons, they would not be, they would still be restricted from development, whether it be wetlands or slope. I empathize with Mr. Hefner when he talks about, a lot of his land is wet. And another gentleman mentioned, he contends with slope. Would those parcels automatically be affected by a tax increase? Or excluded from a tax increase because the condition of their property would exclude them from that value?
So I know that, I can't say exactly for every scenario, but the assessor does. Especially when a property owner brings it to their attention, the assessor tries to accurately predict the market value of those parcels. And I was just zooming in here, you know, a property like this on Trap Road, where you have a very large wetland in the existing residential zone, as well as in the expanded strip, supposedly, potentially. The assessor will look at those scenarios and try to accurately predict value, and that would be extremely limited compared to good, dry, well-drained land.
So it's not a blanket tax increase? So you know you did your best with providing an example based on acreage, but condition would be part of the formula there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else have things that popped up in public comment? Yeah, Mr. Moran.
I feel like you guys did a good job of, well, you folks did a good job of covering most everything I heard. The only thing that jumps out at me that I noted down was a concern about deforestation. Do we have any sense on, in recent years, the rate of deforestation in Auburn?
Not really in, you know, the past few years or anything. I know a lot of what we had for open farmland over the last 50 to 100 years has reforested. I don't have a good sense of how that's changed exactly in the last decade, or something like that. We have over 70% of the agricultural zone is forested. We could probably get the numbers for the other zones. But I don't have it exactly.
Thanks, I had one, I heard one thing, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Has the city done any studies about aquifers and groundwater draws in these areas?
No, we haven't, other than the Lake Auburn watershed study, but that really doesn't look at the groundwater in any detail.
Thank you. If, I mean, things can crop up later from public comment, but beyond that, what are people on the board, or the members of the board, what are you thinking about this? Particular issue before us?
I do have one more question for staff, as a reminder. There was information that came out about growth for Auburn and certain capacities that we have with our infrastructure, including schools, roads, everything around that. Could you, Eric, provide a refresher on how we came about those capacity figures?
So those were discussions that were had with various departments, and we were given the number of 2,000 new residential units. So that includes apartments, that includes single-family homes. And that would generate approximately 6,000 new residents, which was set as the target. But that was talking with police, fire, schools, public works. And then I think the big decision is where do those units go to utilize services most efficiently? It didn't set different zones for where those units should be located.
So concerns around school districts like East Auburn and others were considered as part of that analysis?
Not district by district. So we did not establish different zones where, you know, 30% of the 2,000 homes could be located in this school district versus another one. It was more a citywide look, and then we'll have to look closely at that as we create housing opportunities throughout the city, through the development review process, with input from the school department.
Thank you.
But that's certainly a valid consideration for you folks to consider in making your recommendation.
So 2,000 units is a long way from, you know, at capacity or approaching capacity. It sounds like there's room.
There's some room to increase the number of residents that share the services of Auburn, yep.
So I wonder if, on that map you're showing there, is it possible to throw the Lake Auburn watershed on that?
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention, this is the land cover map. So the largely forested areas are the dark green areas, especially in the northern and southern ends of the city. And then the yellow areas are open fields, agricultural fields. If you could ask about land cover, it's not a percentage, but it's some information. And it's only mapped currently within our agricultural zones and the residential strips. So you, what was it you wanted to?
The Lake Auburn watershed, please.
We haven't mapped the land cover throughout the other parts of the city.
Great, thank you. Any other further thoughts from members of the board? Yeah, Mr. Fineran.
Yes, one concern we heard more than once was in regards to moving forward with a decision without having the comprehensive plan done yet. Do we have a timeline as to when that's going to be done?
The future land use map, we've brought four sections of the comprehensive plan to the council. The future land use map goes Monday night, this coming Monday. You just asked what the timeline was for the future land use map adoption.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have things to say?
Other than questions for staff?
You can ask questions of staff, you can state your thoughts, you can do whatever you want.
So, again, as an associate member of the planning board, I have no vote tonight. I have no ability to make a motion. But I am compelled to speak up for people who aren't here tonight, because I think that's part of my job. We have one of the oldest states in the country, if not the oldest state. I run into a lot of people who are caring for, you know, the sandwich generation. They've got their kids, they've got their parents. Having folks close by to be able to develop something on their own property, very important to them. And I think people jump to the conclusions of major development. And I think what a lot of people would have the opportunity to do, the people that I speak with would have the opportunity to take care of their own. I wish some were here tonight to speak on that behalf, because I find it quite compelling to be in those situations. But I don't want that to be lost in the discussion tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have things they wish to say about this proposal?
I would just like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. You know, we've had a number of these meetings. I recognize some of you from past meetings. I thank you all for coming out repeatedly. I'm hearing overwhelming opposition to this. And I hear you loud and clear. I will not support this. I think that this is not, this is not the right plan. We do have a 2020 comp plan. The comp plan is clear in our desire for future growth of the city. And I think that this is conflicting with that. I don't want this to pass. I think that it's, it's just not well thought out. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Other members of the board with thoughts? Mr. Bergeron?
I agree with Mr. Staples about how this conflicts with the future land use map that we were looking at just last, or two weeks ago. But also, more impactful, I think, was the Lake Auburn water study, which said that increasing density in the watershed wasn't a good idea. And seeing as how much this proposed change falls in the Lake Auburn watershed, I also not support recommending this to city council.
Thank you. Mr. Seer?
Hello, so I also appreciate public coming out. Public comment is always useful for the board. However, it's clearly written in our bylaws that our decisions are to be based on the merit of the information provided to us, and not upon the public opinion expressed within the room. And it's written that way for a reason, because we're not a political body. So, in looking at this proposal, I recognize that we've been asked by the city council to make a recommendation as to whether or not this plan feasibly provides more flexibility for residential uses in these areas. And within that, whether or not we believe, part of feasible is to say whether or not we think it is responsible. And I think that, in looking at this plan, I get the sense that it does, in part, provide more flexibility for residential uses in these areas, and that it does, in part, do so responsibly. However, when I think about land use planning, and I think about the resources within our city, one of the primary concerns that I've struck with this plan is its effect on the Lake Auburn watershed. So one of the places where I would say, I think, I would feel better about forwarding a positive recommendation would be to say that we exempt areas within the Lake Auburn watershed based on the limited, current limited available development, due to the standards that we have there now, in consideration of protecting the filtration waiver, and in consideration that we have not done a full study or a review of the Lake Auburn watershed study that was just released. Additionally, I think about the impact on Taylor Pond, and I think that within the Taylor Pond watershed, in order for this to be a responsible, i.e. feasible, solution to meeting the goal set out by the city council, that we would implement low-impact development standards as defined by the state. And those are actually standards that I think ought to be implemented throughout both watersheds, which aren't necess, which are not currently implemented under local ordinance. But I think those ought to be implemented, and I think this is a good place to start by recommending that it be implemented within the Taylor Pond watershed, so that gets that ball rolling. I also think that part of the thing that would make this a more responsible proposal is to recognize that by extending the strips, we extend the possibility of reaching into the back ag zone, the backlots, the ag zone, such that we're extending the amount of area that can be used residentially, while that it is possible in the foreseeable future that the restrictions we have on our current ag zone may no longer be be in place. And so to that end, I think about protecting the back lots, i.e. those lots, those areas that will still be ag zone. In my 10 years on the board, I know that one of the ways that someone develops their lot is to develop or build a private way, an internal road, a privately owned internal road. Oftentimes, the planning board sees those roads come before us, and the developer asks us to accept it as a public way. However, there's no requirement that it be accepted as a public way. But it is possible to build these internal roads. To me, one thing that I would like to see added would be to add language to limit the internal private roads to extend to a depth, so not a length, but they not be able to extend past a depth of 700 feet from the center line of the public way, in those areas where the strip is extended to 750 feet in depth. So when its totality is written now, now, when I look at it from a future land use and planning lens, I think that would be difficult to recommend. However, I'm putting some thought in. I think that I could send a favorable recommendation with some amendments or additional recommendations made. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martelli?
To start off, I'd like to say thank you to all the people here. And it's not just one night, it's three or four nights that I've seen many of you people here. One thing I would like to say is that if a homeowner has 20 acres of swamp behind the house, there's no sense in taxing him for more on that swamp, because he can't do anything with it, except watch mosquitoes grow. And up until tonight, I was in favor of this plan, but after seeing response here and hearing everybody else, I would have to say that we need to go back to the drawing board, and maybe we can make something work on a case-by-case and grandfather something in for some of these people, so. Might be something to look at for our future. Even though the comprehensive plan says a certain thing, strategic plan says a certain thing, it's not working out with the public, and we got to work with the public, so.
Thank you. Any other members of the board with thoughts?
I just had one more thing. So, you know, to address that, actually, you know, I agree with you. The 2020 comp plan, future land use map, does include a recommendation for implementing some sort of a case-by-case ability for people to petition the planning board or however. It's really just a very loose suggestion to say that some sort of a plan should be made. So the comp plan isn't very specific in what that is, but it does state its desire for it to be implemented, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I have, I want to thank you all for your comments, and thank all of you in the public for your comments as well. I have one question that I want to float out. As I think about our responsibility and think about what could be, I think part of being responsible planning is thinking about what could be. And I agree with Mr. Seer about the Lake Auburn watershed. I think at a minimum, that should be excluded. And I also agree about the low-impact development in the Taylor Pond watershed. But I also wonder, sort of taking one further step back, setting those aside for a second, if the current future land use map is approved, in the 2020, sorry, if the proposed future land use map is approved by city council, and then those land use types become ordinance, what happens to the character of the neighborhoods, particularly in South Auburn? Right, so South, and so Eric, if you scoot down to those areas in South Auburn, those all, the future land use map shows those areas as having a change in density from one unit per acre to... from one unit per acre to two units per acre. If you then, um, and it also decreases the frontage on those roads. So, I think what you're doing is you're enabling, if you put this together with that, you would enable a lot more development in that part of Auburn. And I think it's our responsibility as a board to consider whether that change in the character of those neighborhoods is what Auburn wants. Mr. Seer.
I think the Chair brings up a good point. I would ask the board to consider the following, though. I would ask the board to consider, which of the two solutions do they believe has the, if, if the goal of the board, or individual members of the board, is to maintain a character of a neighborhood, which of these two solutions has the least impact? And the reason I ask the board to consider that is because this is something that is in front of us. Regardless of what we say tonight, um, the City Council has the final say. Uh, with regard to the future land use, we will go through the same process, assuming that someone initiates a zoning map amendment, okay? So, if someone does choose, uh, either the City Council, the planning board, or members of the public, choose to implement a zoning change process based on an approved future land use plan, we would then be in this room having this discussion again, at which point we would be deciding whether or not we believe it's, uh, a reasonable solution in order to, uh, attain the goals that have been set out for us by the City Council. Um, and then again, it would go to the City Council, and they would take our recommendation and our opinions, and they would, um, use them as they see fit, and they would also engage in a public process in which, uh, they will go through and have their own debate. So, I think that, yes, it is important to recognize that the two are tied together, what we are talking about tonight and future land use, but I also think it's important to recognize that, um, it is incumbent upon us to decide which of the two we believe is more appropriate, I guess, at this point, because we have forwarded the future land use plan to the City Council. We are going to forward a recommendation, one way or the other, tonight. Um, but really, that question is, do we think this is a better solution to providing, um, additional, um, residential opportunities or flexibility for residential uses, or do we believe what's in the future land use? An individual could believe that together they are, they are great, that an individual on the board can say that they should both happen. Um, I guess, I am just wary of, um, I am wary of, what was it? My experience in the past is that I have been on, I have been on the planning board for 10 years, and the previous comprehensive plan was not implemented with regard to future land use. So, um, I am, I, I think that this is something that needs a solution, um, and, and so I guess, there's no point beating around the bush. This is a solution that's been put in my lap, that I do have, um, some authority to provide a recommendation on, um, and I would rather not wait for the future land use to be brought in front of us. It's been my experience that it wasn't over the last decade. That's just my, me, maybe that's a personal rant, but.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, comments from members of the board? So, to proceed, I would need a motion.
Like to make a motion that we, uh, forward a negative, uh, recommendation for this proposal to the City Council.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any debate of this motion?
Yeah, I think to simply forward a negative recommendation really leaves the City Council on a spot to have, to start this process all over again. Um, they've asked us to give our opinion, and if our opinion is simply to say no, um, they, they will take that and say, okay, that is one piece of information, and they will go through this debate all over again. I don't think that we are necessarily doing our job in helping the council understand what we believe, um, is, uh, reasonable, and what is not reasonable, what could work, and what could not work, and why. And I think that one should only send an unfavorable recommendation out of hand if one believes that, in its entirety, this plan, um, is unreasonable and has no merit.
Thank you. Any more, any other thoughts on this? Right?
I will say, my, my two senses, I agree with Mr. Seer, and I thought he brought up some really good points, um, about how we can make some recommendations for City Council to consider and think about, uh, specifically around the watershed. So, by proposing a negative, that's taking that off of the table, in my opinion, maybe I'm misunderstanding the process, but by proposing a complete negative, or not even, like, proposing some opportunities for them to think about other fair items like Mr. Seer had shared.
One thing that is possible, given this motion, just because there is a motion that's been seconded, is amendments could be made to explain why we don't like this plan. Um, so if somebody wants to do that, we could do that. If not, I will call a vote. Hearing no further debate, I'd like to call a vote on this motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries 5-2.
Thank you for standing up for the item 4. Thank you very much.
So, now we move on to, um, item 4 on the agenda, um, which is a public hearing. You know what? Actually, let's, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess.
Staff.
Rosemary Mosher, our dressing officer has run this by the departments that require review. It is a name that is different enough than other names to be used as a street name. So staff recommends that we allow this group to use this name as their street name if the board approve it. I will just note that this board, the planning board, asked to be removed from this process. That's on the agenda for next Monday night, so this should be the last one that comes to you as long as that passes.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff about this? Hearing no questions for staff, I'd like to open public comment on this item. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Any members of the public present would like to address the board on this issue, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no members of the public, I'd like a motion to close public comment.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Discussion motions thought from the board.
I make a motion to assign the street name Blue Dream Drive to a street segment branching off Goldwraith Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any debate of this motion? Hearing none, I call for a vote, all is in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, it's a workshop item, proposed amendment to section sixty dash nine eight nine to add language that reflects recent legislature requirements for photographic evidence of the shoreline of all development projects located in the shoreline zone. Staff?
This, this became an option in 2019 and now the most recent legislation made it a mandate. It is incredibly useful to have images of the shoreline on file periodically over time to be able to track what's changed. So if the board's comfortable with it, I know each of these recommended actions says to schedule for the December fourteenth meeting. Megan has decided not to continue working for the city, so if we could be a little bit open that we schedule it for an upcoming meeting, it would be easier for us to manage the workload as we go through the next couple of meetings.
So wait, just, I want to repeat that back to you, so you're it for staff for the city at the moment in your department?
No, so, then we can talk about it a little more after the meeting, John Blaze is going to continue to work for the city.
He is going to continue?
Yes, he is.
Okay, great, thank you.
Recent development, so.
Got it, thank you.
So when I read through this, I, is this the time for, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, so when I read through this, I, I immediately thought, you know, it sounds good. I am a little bit unsure of how the, you know, how the quality of the photos is early, is there a requirement? Is there, is there some sort of a standard that needs to be met with these photographs? Is it something I could take with my phone, or do I have to hire a professional photographer? That kind of thing, that's a, you know, it, to me, it sounded like it could be an added cost burden. And so I just maybe wanted some clarification and.
Yeah, I think it's, we require a site plan for improvements as well, and some people are capable of that. Staff will help where they can if it's something that we can help with. I wouldn't expect that it would be a photographer, a professional, taking the photos. But we would have to have a clear image of the shoreline and we could work with the property owner if they had some limitation that prevented them from being able to do that, we could do that with a city iPad if that's what it took. But generally, we'd expect, I mean, we could lay it out, we would expect clear photos of the portion of the frontage that has developed on their property.
Mr. Martelli.
Eric, are we also talking about drone footage or an overhead satellite or, or what?
No, we, we have periodic flyover flights that the city has access to or Google, but we're not asking for drone footage or anything like that.
Mr. Seer.
What are the implications of not adopting this? More to the point, does home rule, if we don't adopt this, does the home rule statute sort of give us authority to say that you don't need it because we don't have it in our ordinance even though it's a state law?
So we, we have to be at least as stringent as the state law, we, we can't be less stringent. Home rule would allow us to be more stringent than the state law. The reality of the state coming down to Auburn and saying, we're taking over your entire shoreline zoning ordinance because you haven't adopted this provision is not, not very likely. But I think over time, we should continue to try to be in compliance with the minimum standards, and this, this is now one of the minimum standards for shorelines.
So essentially, in order to meet the intent of state's statute, we need to adopt this?
The, the actual letter of the new shoreline zoning changes.
Yep.
It is an unfunded mandate essentially.
Anything else from the board on this item? Do people want to hear this, have this come back as a public hearing?
Yeah, I think it needs to happen, I think, I mean, it, it sounds to me like, you know, we're required to do this under state law. If we don't do it, we're running amok of state law, so, yeah, bring it back. And I would say, since staff is short staff, or the planning office is short staff, bring it back whenever they want. But I also don't see this being longer than, you know, like a, like a five-minute public hearing either, so.
I completely agree, thank you. Do we need to vote to do that? Probably.
Yeah, we should have a vote ideally.
So I'd need a motion to schedule a public hearing for this.
I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for this item and that it be scheduled at staff's convenience.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six on the agenda is a proposed amendment to section sixty dash one five zero seven to add the requirement that a decommissioning plan for a solar project be approved by the main DEP with accompanying financial assurance for all projects occupying three or more acres. Staff?
So when we developed our solar ordinance, we determined that solar projects occupying more than one acre would require approval by the planning board with the exception of one that's purely serving onsite needs. So I think we're already a little bit more stringent than this state requirement is in that we're already requiring some kind of surety and decommissioning plan for anything over an acre that's serving something other than just the onsite needs. This really isn't a requirement that we incorporated in the ordinance in talking with staff. Staff felt that it may just be a good reminder for people to see it as part of the review, but we don't absolutely have to make this part of the ordinance. DEP's requirement will still apply after you exceed the three acre threshold of area occupied by panels. So I guess we're, we're open to putting in the, in the ordinance, it's not an absolute requirement. It will be required at the state level regardless of whether Auburn puts a note in their ordinance to reference it.
Great, thank you. Any thoughts on this, questions for staff?
I have one.
Yep, Mr. DeBois.
Just out of curiosity for my own benefit, if not for others, but the assurance, financial assurance, is that something that's put in some type of account upon building?
Yeah, so, so far, it's either a letter of credit or a bond of some kind. And on at least the, the large project that was built on Riverside Drive, the state required that anyways as part of their site location permit.
So if they go out of business and disappear, that's sitting there for, for the project to be decommissioned?
Yes, yes, it is, so the bank, in, in the example, we've never had one expire on a solar project. We hold these for cell towers, and usually the state also has one, and we just make sure we're also named on the same bond or letter of credit and say Norway Savings Bank will call us ten years after the project, confirm that the project's still in place and in good standing, and they'll renew the, the letter of credit for US Cellular or whoever it is. And if they don't agree to renew it, then we would have to go after the project before that, that expires.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I wouldn't have a problem if this came before us as a public hearing, but I'm going to say now what I'm going to say then, and then I won't say it then, I'll, I'll say it again, we all know me. But I don't know, I mean, I, I hear what staff's saying is good, so the public knows that it's there. But at the same time, I don't want to stick something in our ordinance that like gets forgotten three years from now and the state changes the law and no one realizes, then all of a sudden, like we did something, oh man, there's a conflict. If it turned out, DEP makes it part of their process for this project no matter what anyway, so.
So, yeah, just to clarify, this is different from the previous one because, because why?
This is not a mandate for us to incorporate into our ordinance, so it would be an optional kind of reminder. I agree that if it changes, if DEP changes their rules, then we'd have to change ours, and maybe it makes sense to not incorporate it.
Yeah, I think I concur with Mr. Seer on this, that this actually sounds like something that belongs in sort of a process document or instructions to applicants rather than an ordinance.
And did I hear you say that we already have something that's more stringent than this?
We require a similar guarantee already locally. If DEP also requires it, we would probably have both the state of Maine and the city of Auburn named on the same instrument, whether it's in our ordinance or not.
Do we want to hear a motion to hear this, or?
No, I think unless the board desires, desires to add it, staff is fine without adding it. Unless there's a motion, we'll just move on to the next item.
If I don't hear a motion, we will move on to item number seven on our agenda, a proposed amendment to the ordinance to add a definition for tiny homes and/or adjust the seven hundred square foot requirement for habit, habitable space to be considered a single-family dwelling. Staff?
This is another one that I don't know that you'll want to make a quick decision on at the December meeting, but it seems like it should be simple, hey, tiny homes are allowed, let's just allow them. But as you start to look at the details of this and compare our ordinance to state law, I think there are some things that we really need to think about. The staff report identifies four criteria of what it means to be a tiny home, that it complies with the American National Standards Institute on Plumbing, Propane, Fire Life Safety, or complies with the National Fire Prevention Association Standard eleven ninety-two on plumbing, propane fire, and safety specifically for recreational vehicles, that it does not exceed four hundred square feet in size, does not exceed any dimension allowed for operation on a public way, so that's really going to limit the width of a tiny home, and that it is a vehicle without motorized power, and it does not include trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer, recreational vehicle, or manufactured housing. That all comes out of the state law. Auburn has a separate provision that limits single-family homes to not being smaller than seven hundred feet. So if we implement the state law, which we have to, and we have to consider a tiny home that meets these four criteria to be allowed wherever we allow single-family homes, then there's a couple of things that happen if we don't adjust our seven hundred square feet. We create this gap, I guess, and maybe this is fine, but I think it's something that you and the council should think about. You can build a tiny home that's, say, eight feet wide and thirty feet long, but then you can't add on to it later if the size will exceed four hundred square feet because there'll be a gap between a tiny home of something less than four hundred, a single fam- family home in Auburn has to be over seven hundred. So you could build a three hundred and ninety-nine square foot tiny home, you can't build a four hundred and ten square foot tiny home. That seems a bit illogical unless we really just want to limit small homes. The other thing is, you would be able to build a, let's say the maximum road width is ten feet, you could build a ten by forty tiny home and still meet the dimension allowed for opera, operation on a public way. So you could build this long, narrow, forty-foot home, but you could not build a twenty by twenty-foot, four hundred square foot home. It just seems illogical if you're going to allow, you know, the first dimension, ten by forty, why wouldn't you allow somebody to build a twenty by twenty that's the same size, different dimension? And I guess it's, it's kind of a policy decision of whether or not we want to allow a lot of small homes that are outside of that tiny home provision, but not as large as the seven hundred square feet that we've had. I think it makes some sense, especially for accessory dwelling units, this would apply to both. But there's a little more to think about than just eliminating our seven hundred square feet for a single-family home. So looking to start that discussion, not to answer all those questions tonight, but you guys can start to think about that.
Okay, thanks. Members of the board, yeah, Mr. Martelli?
Eric, clarify something for me here. In the second paragraph, it says effective October eighteenth, and you go down to where it says tiny home, and means living space permanently constructed on a framed chassis designed for use as a permanent living quarters. And then you're saying that the city says, does not include a trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer, or recreational or manufactured housing. Can you?
Yeah, that, that tiny home does not include as part of the state law definition. So, and I think it defines trailer as in like a mobile home or manufactured housing, semi-trailer as in like a box truck that's converted.
Because I, I know that there's a couple of companies in the eastern part of the state here that build these tiny homes on, on chassis that roll anywhere.
Yep.
And maximum height, of course, is thirteen six. So if they were to get it here and they put it on the property, now would, would they be able to build a second story on it?
So I, I think that seven hundred square feet that I mentioned comes into play if they had a, you know, three hundred and eighty square foot per story.
Yeah.
They could only build a second story if the total was going to exceed seven hundred. So you'd have that gap between four hundred and seven hundred, that's.
Mr. Martelli, they also can't exceed the height.
What's that?
They cannot exceed that height limit of thirteen six.
Thirteen six is, is your maximum on a highway.
Right, but they can't drop it off and then exceed that because then it would no longer meet the definition of a tiny home because it would no longer comply with the dimensional, with dimension allowed for operation on a public way.
That's why I want to try and clarify.
I think that's one of the questions, so would we want that person who started out with a four hundred square foot tiny home to be able to add on to that over time? And it's, it's no longer a tiny home at that point, it becomes a single-family home that's smaller than most. But eventually, it'd be a small home that sits on a permanent foundation, no intention of ever moving it, the wheels or chassis goes away, and it becomes a small, single-family home over time instead of a tiny home just by, by definition. I don't know if we want that or not, but I, I think that's something we should think about.
So under this definition of tiny home, I, I know you don't work in the assessing office, but are we able to tax these homes as, as, as homes in the city of Auburn? I know that if you have a, a trailer, like a, an RV that you park in your, in your driveway, you, you're not taxed on that as a home. So how, how does that work?
I, I still have some questions about that, I believe one of the provisions is probably going to create an allowance for somebody that either has it on a property for less than a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days that you would not be able to tax it and not be able to make them connect to water, sewer, or electricity. But anything longer than that, then they would have to make all the same connections as a single-family home. We can talk to Karen Scammon about that and actually see if she can summarize that for a future discussion. Some of those things will be out of our control.
The thing that I like about tiny homes is that right now, you know, it allows somebody just starting out to build a home. And, and the idea of being able to build an addition to that home, I think is something that we should promote, you know? Right now, a lot of these houses that are being built, brand-new houses, and Mr. DeBois, you could tell us, I mean, they're, they're, they don't start out at low numbers, you know, and a tiny home does in a lot of cases. So I mean, I, I think it's something that we should explore if we can.
Mr. Martelli.
Yeah, I, I think to clarify something for Mr. Staples, if we were to go over to Country Lane Estates, which is over in Lewiston on, on Sabatus, and that's all mobile homes, they put a, a skirt around it, you know, it looks decent, you know? If they were to do something like that, I think that would be a big help, for one thing. I'm not in favor of a, a house moving in and out, you know, every six months or whatever it is, not in favor of that. I would rather see a, a concrete foundation and a small home built, you know, so it's permanent. The other thing is, is that with a, a mobile piece, it would be easier to replace it, you know, should there be a fire or anything like that, you just pull it out and you put another one there, you know? It's not a big deal. But I would, I would rather see a, a permanent foundation rather than a portable foundation, so.
Mr. Seer.
Eric, I got a question, so I'm thinking about this, I'm like, is amending the size, the minimum size for a house in Auburn like a solution, you know, that, for a problem that doesn't exist? Like, how many houses have been permitted, that, how many like sing, how many like one-bedroom? Because I also know it goes up, basically, like that's the minimum, but if you're building like a two-bedroom, it's, it's a little bit like the, the, um, what is it, it goes up to like seven fifty or something like that, or, and then I thought, I don't think there's any provision after that. If I remember correctly, there's something in there. So let's say it's seven fifty, we'll assume I'm wrong, but we'll work with that number. So like, how many of these two-bedroom, one-bath houses that are seven hundred fifty square feet have been permitted to be built in the city within the last, like, I don't know, five years?
I don't know, I mean, we've certainly turned down multiple tiny homes each year over the past five.
So like tiny homes, but like, you're talking about like a tiny home, because this is, we're saying tiny home, but this is, this is a specific class of tiny home that's referred to a THO, or T-H-O-W, a tiny home, tiny house on wheels, right? Because like, I'm into tiny houses, there's all different kinds of tiny houses, different classes, whatever, but this is a tiny house on wheels. So this gets turned down, but I'm saying, like, how many houses in the city of Auburn have been built that were only seven hundred or seven hundred and fifty square feet because they're just trying to build the smallest house they can because they just want a tiny house?
Yeah, you'd have to pull through the assessment data to see how many.
Because like, like, that's something I'd want to see, because if there's none, I'd be like, we don't need to close the gap then, you know?
Yeah, just.
Why open that can of worms?
I think a histogram over the last five years of house size versus permit would be good.
We could look at that.
You know?
I guess my, my sense is that this four hundred square foot home is preferable over this four hundred square foot home. But that's, I think that's a policy, policy decision that you and the council will have to make. I mean, we would be effectively allowing this mobile four hundred square foot home and prohibiting this on a full foundation if we just accept the state law and keep our standards the same.
Well, I, I would argue that the, the homeowner would rather have that one as well, but their finances might require them to go with the other.
Yep.
So I think everyone would love to have a foundation, but can they afford it?
Yep.
So it seems to me that what we're trying to solve here isn't really a demand issue yet, but it could be. What we're really trying to solve is a policy issue, there's a recognized gap that if we are faced with this down the road, we need to have an answer for them.
Yep, at least that we've thought about it and we've decided not to, not to allow homes of that size range.
And the one on the top would, by ordinance, be restricted to certain zones in town?
So the, the one on the top, based on the state law, is allowed now by state law anywhere that the city of Auburn or any other town allows for single-family homes. So it can be either on a standalone lot by itself, and there's nothing the community can do to treat this differently than a single-family home, or it could be added to a lot with. Or it could be added to a lot with an existing single-family home as an accessory structure, and the community can't prohibit that.
It might be preferable for us to incentivize the other over the one on.
Right, but you can prohibit a a mobile home?
You can prohibit a mobile home. You can prohibit parks. You can't prohibit a mobile home anywhere that we allow single-family homes, but there's not this same allowance that it can always be placed as an accessory structure either, like a tiny. Like, you you could place this next to your home, and there's not, the city is not allowed to prohibit that.
Unless you have a neighborhood, neighborhood, neighborhood covenants that would exclude a mobile home, then it really doesn't default to any town ordinance.
And the city can't enforce those neighborhood covenants. It really, it's it's stripped some local control with these these changes. And as we talked about it at a staff level, I would prefer this as a neighbor than this that moves in every six months or moves out every year. It's kind of a revolving door.
So it sounds like we do want to have further conversation with staff report. And so I guess the question is, you know, we want to know some of the tax implications. Mr. Seer's question, are there other things that we would want to know?
Utility hookups, I think, will be a question.
Yeah, that, and we had the histogram of permits, right?
Yep.
How does that work in the watershed? Right? So I've got a septic that's built out for my house, but it's overbuilt for my house. So could I just throw that up there and like, tell Sid Hazelton, like, tough cookies, you know, like, I got a septic that can handle it? So state law says I can do this? I can't imagine that going well, you know, like, that's not, these are not the things I want to see. Like, I do not want to have to deal with that.
Well, it sounds like we don't have a choice, right?
I, yeah, I feel like the state really stuck us in a spot here.
They they are subject to the same standards that the community has for single-family homes. So I'd say probably the one place that you can't do this widely is the Lake Auburn watershed.
Unless you've got a septic that can handle it.
Yep, if you have a septic system that has the 36 inches.
You know, I could accept the top one if it were dressed up, you know, in a rural residential area like we were just talking about in the previous discussion. Where it's out in the field, you know, behind the house type thing. But in city, I can't accept that, you know? The little one there, that house right there, yes, I could. So it's it's going to have to depend upon where you're placing it.
You you've asked for enough that I think we could have a continued workshop in the future, and then you can help us refine what we schedule for a moment.
Yeah.
That works.
Okay.
When you do this, there is actually a house that I grew up, like, almost across the street from, on Enfield Street in New Auburn that fits this, that is like way too small, like, it would not, you would not be able to build it right now. But that might be interesting, so that way we could see an actual example, like, this is what it looks like in a regular, like, in in a New Auburn residential neighborhood. That bottom example, this is what it looks like.
Yep, I know who owns it, and I've seen the inside, so we can get some pictures of it.
You know which home I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
I think
There's one on Richardson Street, too. Richardson as well.
I think it would also be useful to see, and so when, I think the experience I have when I hear tiny home is, you know, this HGTV fancy, high-end, buffed-out tiny zone, tiny home. And those can be made to look good, but per Mr. Martelli's point, I think it would be good if we could see a variety of tiny homes, as in, you know, what do they look like five years after being built, 10 years after, but like, that's, doesn't seem like a structure like that would be particularly durable. That would be important.
Yeah, I could see incorporating the ice shack that was left over from last winter into your tiny home. Not having exactly what would be acceptable.
For example. Okay, so you have enough for us to have another workshop on this?
Yep, I don't need a motion. I'll just bring it back with additional info.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda is a workshop discussion to explore existing and possibly additional provisions for grandfathering parcels that have been rezoned by Planning Board and City Council Action. Staff?
So I just wanted to give you the examples of what we already have, and I really think that this number 60-39 probably covers 90% of what we were talking about the other time, and then it was mentioned, the number of units. So I copied some other related provisions, but 60-39, the lot area, except as other ways may be required, the lot width and lot depth requirements of this chapter shall not apply to any lot which was lawfully laid out in conformance with the zoning regulations in effect at the time of lot creation and duly recorded by plan or deed. Any lot that exists, and then there's an ordinance change afterwards that makes it non-conforming, is considered legally existing and can still be used in the future, as long as it met the standard when it was created. I think that covers what we were talking about in the Lake Auburn watershed or anywhere else if we were to reduce the minimum lot dimensions required. So happy to answer any questions about that, but I think that covers most of it.
With that, so let's say, you know, two trees fall on my house and they total it, I have to rebuild it. So it's a complete loss. Does this provision actually cover that?
So it covers the use of the lot. It may not cover the use of the existing foundation. So the new house can be replaced on the lot, but if the existing foundation was, let's say it's right up against your side property lot, the new replacement might have to be centered more in the lot to meet the setbacks, but it can be replaced on the lot.
Okay, thank you.
And then there was also the ag zone provision. They have 12 months to replace a non-conforming home in the ag zone if it's destroyed by fire. And I think you had, somebody had mentioned that, I think Steve's situation on Gamma J Avenue. And we do have a provision to allow for two more units than what are allowed on the site to be replaced, but it might not get you back to the number of units that you had originally. If you had six units, then the zoning allows two, we could get you four the next time. But not all the way to the sixth that you had before.
That would have been nice.
Well, like, we had this issue when we were talking about rezoning New Auburn, too, though, well, not just New Auburn, but we were talking about extending the Form Based Code up in New Auburn. Was it like, yeah, sure, you can go ahead and build your single-family home back on there or the multifamily unit only. The lots are such that you physically can't, right? Because of the setbacks that would have been required. It was like, oh, well, you know, your house can be 15 feet deep now. You know, like, because that's that's how far back you're going to go, so. So, yeah, I think it's good that we bring this up, but that has, but I guess in the past has caused us to go back and look at our zoning and be more responsible about how we zone something instead of just relying on grandfathering. But it is, it can be a serious issue, you know, to bring up the point about like, if the house falls down, but if you were on an undersized lot, that's it, you're done.
Right.
Well, I'm surprised to hear, because another Mr. Seer from the public had his concern about a New Auburn lot. That if his house went up in flames, got hit by a tree, whatever the scenario, he would have that exact situation. And we assured him with 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 what we passed, that he would actually have more flexibility than what we just discussed on this, that they'd have to move the foundation.
So I think most of the area that we adopted Form Based Codes in, people did get more flexibility. We could look at the specific lot. We also have in, I think it's every zoning district. We have a provision that if a lot is undersized, that it actually gets reduced setback requirements. So urban residential zone, as an example, 100 by 100 lot has a 25-foot front and a 25-foot rear setback. But if it's less than 100 feet deep, then we can use 25% of the average lot depth as the setback instead of 25 feet. And then on the sides, most of our residential zones, if you have a 50-foot wide lot, you have a five-foot side setback, and then as your lot size increases, every additional five feet of frontage or part thereof, I think is the way it's worded, adds one foot to your setback. So if you have a 50-foot lot, you have five-foot side setbacks. If you have a 60-foot lot, you have six-foot side setbacks. Uh, seven-foot, rather. Then it goes up until you get to the maximum, which is quite often 50 on the sides in our residential zones. We could look at a particular lot, but the Form Based Code, I think in every case, but I know in almost every case, gave people more flexibility for rebuilding than what they had.
In most cases, it gave them the opportunity to not have to change their footprint at all.
That's how, that's how I understood it.
No, that was why we did it. It was just like, what was the setback? It was like 20 feet or 25 feet or something? All these, all these things were like 10 foot from the, from the front, so now they could be as close as five foot or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I can't think of any instance where it became more restrictive with the Form Based Codes.
Which meant that they didn't need to be grandfathered, right?
Or less need anyways.
They're they're not non-conforming. If it's less restrictive, it means you're not out of compliance.
I think he's in the corner of Dunn and Third Street, thereabouts.
Yeah, that whole neighborhood is now Form Based Code, so. It may not have solved every non-conformity, but it made buildings less
Yeah.
or more conforming than they were.
I think, you know, in general, seeing the zoning changes that are coming to us lately, it's not normal that we would make a zone more restrictive. I mean, it seems like most of the things that we're doing are increasing density, reducing setbacks, reducing road frontage, that type of thing. And that that tends to lend itself to, you know, not having non-conforming lots. You know, I I brought this to the board, you know, last meeting, so I I just, my my goal here was just to to just do a review and make sure that we put ourselves in a good place where, you know, if things were to be an issue with 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 creating non-conforming lots, that we're covered, you know, so that our citizens aren't stranded if something happened to their property. They they were able to redow in some way. So, I mean, it's, it seems like we're we're covered better than I hoped, which is good. I don't know. Eric, do you think there's any places, room for improvement here?
I, I think Auburn's ordinance is already more flexible than most when it comes to trying to, over time, bring properties into conformance with what has been set in ordinance. And I think this board's been mindful of any changes, trying not to create more non-conformities. You know, if you wanted to, you could look at some maps, grab a couple of scenarios, and we could tell you how these standards would apply to those scenarios and see if there is a situation that you think is just, that's wrong, that somebody should not be sort of stuck in that position. As buildings get whether destroyed by fire, that's really your best chance if there's something that is abnormal in that neighborhood that is white or just totally out of character with the neighborhood, that's your best chance to bring it more in conformance with the vision for the neighborhood as well. You also don't want to create a bunch of non-conformities by changing the standards. But there may be an auto repair shop in a residential neighborhood that burns to the ground, the owner's made whole with their insurance, and you might not want that there anymore.
So I don't want an answer to this question tonight because it's, we're starting to actually start debating merits, I guess. But my question would be, if we choose to look at this again, the only thing I'm seeing is, is is there a possibility to create a process similar to like a special exception or a site plan review in which a parcel owner could come in front of us and get approval for putting back exactly what they had, right? Because they can't otherwise. So I guess that would be, that would be my only question moving forward. Like, the next time we talk about this, I would like that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a possibility. What, what would the standards be that you would measure that against?
Is that not part of the process right now? If someone had an extenuating circumstance, couldn't they petition the city for an exception?
Yeah, so they, if, let's say this scenario, I think that Evan was bringing up, that the house burns down and there's really no reasonable way to fit any type of usable house on the lot any longer. I think then you have a good case for a variance from the Board of Appeals if you're being deprived of all reasonable use of that lot. If our standard is essentially telling you that that lot is then you've got a good case for a variance.
Yeah.
But if you had, the variance should be the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship. So if somebody had a three-family, you know, maybe a single-family is enough to alleviate the hardship, that they get some reasonable use of that land.
A variance wouldn't necessarily allow them to put back exactly what they had where they had it. You know what I mean?
But it would give them some use of the land, whatever the Board Board of Appeals thought was the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship.
So if I heard this right, if, once this comes back, or if it comes back, we would want to have an an answer whether or not there is, it is possible to set up some process, special exception, whatever process.
It is possible, and and if you weren't going to put any standards to it, I would say just give everybody a set amount of time to do what they had before. I mean, unless you were going to have standards where you were really trying to adjust that proposal to meet something other than what it was.
Yep.
And why not just say, hey, you got 12 months to do it again?
Yep. Okay.
But there are instances where there are land uses in the wrong place, and that's your chance to get those cleared out.
Yep. So what do people think about this? Do we want to hear this again? Do you want this to come back? If so, I think we'd need a motion.
Do we need a motion to have it come back as a workshop?
No, probably not.
I'm not sure we're at a point where we even want to get close to a public hearing.
Yeah, I agree.
So like, I'd I'd be in favor of just saying like, oh, we'd like staff to bring it back to us as a workshop during a meeting when they feel that it it fits.
I think, given some information on what we have, and we could, you know, as a miscellaneous item at the next meeting, if you want, we can talk about next steps.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to, you know, the the area that triggered this, it would be nice to actually look at the possibility, you know, some examples in that in that part of Auburn. And that's a hypothetical situation, but I think that would be actually interesting to see.
And that's, that's specifically that rural zone designation that we talked about in the future land use category?
Right, where rural residential is now going to rural.
Yep.
All right. We now come to item nine on our agenda, which is the public comment. I see no members of the public present. Moving on to item 10 on our agenda is Planning Board items for discussion. First item here is COVID policy, and Eric, do you have?
The COVID policy is changing almost daily right now. The city is an employer of more than 100 people. So that's really what we wanted to bring up in this discussion is that if the OSHA standards pass the way that they've been proposed, then the city would have to each employee of the city, including board members, involve then the city would have to, each employee of the city, including board members and volunteers, in the definition of employee, unfortunately, by the, by the federal standard, would have to either show the city that they're vaccinated to continue to serve in a volunteer capacity on the planning board, or test weekly to be able to stay in that capacity. And right now, it looks like that expense would be borne by the employee, which, you know, you guys know, your job is not easy, you're not getting paid to be here, and that would be probably hard to accept for someone that feels strongly about not getting vaccinated. That may be coming down the line. We're hoping it doesn't apply to board members, but it is a possibility. We do have two vacant seats, and we'll be looking for volunteers for those seats, with Joseph going to the council as well as Dana going to the council. But I think this is something that could make it that much harder to fill volunteer seats if that's where the chips fall.
And so, thank you. And so, just being clear about those membership, is that neither Joe nor Dana will be present for our next meeting. So those spots will be vacant at that point, which would leave us with one full and one associate vacancy. So, Mr. Dumboi, if you are an associate member now and would like to become a full member, you would have to reapply, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so you'd have to submit an application to, to do that, to, and select full member instead of associate, so.
So nothing's for certain regarding that. Hopefully that won't come to pass, but it is a possibility.
And so continuing on, this sort of runs right into item B. Chair, so we're coming up to the end of the year, and then I think in February, we will elect a new chair. As has happened in the past, I would be happy to meet with anybody who's interested in chairing this planning board. You don't have to let me know now, you can just let me know beforehand, but it is useful. If you are interested, I could, or thinking about being interested, I could, you know, we could include you in one of the meeting planning, the sessions that we have with staff. Riley's experienced them, he knows that they're terrifically exciting, as does Mr. Seer, so I think both of them would be happy to talk to people as well, if you're interested in that, so.
Can we volunteer members?
Volunteer other members? Oh, absolutely. There's a nomin, there is a nomination process, which will happen at the February 8 meeting.
Nominate Stacy.
No, no.
Yeah, well, that's the danger of nominating somebody else, you could yourself be nominated. Oh, right, item 11, miscellaneous. What's coming up for December?
So we were expecting a couple of projects for the December meeting. They did not make the deadline. We are expecting a new warehouse facility for Agron Appliance out on Harriman Drive, or this is a small side street within that development, and potentially another residential apartment complex. Not sure if that'll be in for, for, they missed the December meeting at this point, so probably January.
Okay, so a light meeting in December, then?
Yes, it should be relatively light in December. I did give them a few more days beyond the deadline to submit this week, but it doesn't sound like they'll make that for the warehouse project. Because this, this month's meeting is relatively early, and next month's meeting, the second Tuesday, is relatively late.
Yep.
They had an extra.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to item number 12, item, item number 12. Do I have a motion?
One more thing.
Yeah.
I will not be here for the December meeting. I have an engagement, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, all in your favor, yay!